Call this meeting to order while the police stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have the Secretary to know roll call, Julie. Call for the responding report.
Well. Lot going on. There's, just to let you know, there's ninety-one school board district referendums this term in April for eighty-five districts. So some districts are asking for maybe a non-recurring or recurring. Most of them are for operating costs, which doesn't surprise me at all. We'll see how those turn out. The DPI is changing, is proposing changes to the start date, remember we talked about that? You kind of have to jump through hoops to change your start date. So looking at that, the bill wouldn't give total control back to the, to the school districts, but it would give us some flexibility as to when we want to, you know, when we want to start. So that will help. The Senate and the Assembly met for their last legislative, legislative action of twenty-two, twenty-four. There's like almost three pages of bills here pertaining to education that they were going to bring up. If it doesn't get passed in the way it's written, if no amendments, then it's not going to get passed for this session. It'll have to wait for, for the next time. The Speaker's Task Force on Childhood BCD is mandating, that's that word we always like to hear, mandating, because it always comes with all the money. But they are, they're proposing up to mandate requiring schools to offer three hours of activity per week for K through eight students. So what does that define activity? They haven't done that. And what's that going to do to schedules? You know, I don't know if recess running around, that recess is an activity or is it supposed to be a planned activity? No. So we'll see how much comes on that one. The new law regarding reading instruction. That was supposed to be implemented for twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five. There are some districts, some administrators, a little concerned that there's not enough time to get this implemented for that, for that, for that school year. So they were sending a letter to Dr. Jill Underlee, at the DPI, and State Superintendent, and asking if they could extend that a little bit. I hope that they do because I don't, this is so new. I don't want them to rush into it and not do it right. Let's take our time and let's get it done the way it should be. Hope that, that turns out good. And the last thing I'd talk about is, there was a legislative hearing that would mandate, there's that word again, a community-based approach for 4K programs. I'm not quite, I don't quite understand the concept of community-based 4K programs. But it's what defined by the DPI. One thing that does include in the, would include in that legislation is that the teachers that are, teach four-year-old kindergarten would not have to hold a license or buy the DPI.
So they're just trying to expand access to four-year-old kindergarten?
That's my understanding, yes. It's for communities that have childcare centers.
Yep, you have to contact with them.
Work with them, which would not apply to us because we, there are no childcare centers within Algoma that are not already controlled by the school districts.
So we'll see how that turns out. I would just like to say that I've done this for twenty-one years. I would, I don't know who's going to get this job when you, but who does? It takes just a little bit more extra time to, to prepare for a meeting, but I would tell you to embrace it because you're going to learn a lot. You're going to learn a lot about Madison and some of the federal government, how they work or how they don't work. So take it for what it's worth. You're going to learn, they're going to learn a lot and just, it just takes a little extra time.
Yeah, and we thank you for all your years of doing it.
You're welcome. I couldn't give it to anybody else.
That's the way it works, right? But look at how much you learn.
Yes, yes. Frustrating at times and bad news most of the time, but once in a while there's something good that happens.
And you'll probably continue watching it.
You know, I just might.
Yeah, you'll be informed.
I just might.
Okay, Board Cesar and Board Chrissy.
We met last week. The CISA reps talked about the March PAC meeting. Twenty-five of the thirty-eight superintendents in our CISA attended, so really good participation there. They are already planning out all of next school year, added dates to superintendent's calendars so that superintendents can make that a priority for next year. They're still working on the parking lot situation there. They were going to use CISA-ten as their resident expert on the parking lot, but CISA-ten's person resigned who has really good knowledge about that, so they are working with a different contractor in Green Bay for that. So hopefully news to come for those of you who have to park there. They are opening up contracts. They offer a two-year contract with the school districts and a one-year contract, obviously a little bit price favorable if you latch on with a two-year contract. So they wanted us to keep our eyes on that. The biggest need they have been seeing from the districts is Act Twenty training. So they are hiring another literacy specialist. And to my surprise, they had fourteen applicants. So I thought that was a pretty good number considering the hiring that happens in everywhere right now. Right now, they are talking about the delegate convention for the May meeting and I'm waiting for word to see if Algoma has a delegate for going forward on their board. So they didn't have those.
Mick just pointed at you and she's like, she thinks it's you.
Well, they didn't know if the board, like, I guess different districts get, you have to be voted on to be a delegate in CISA-seven, so they didn't tell me if Algoma gets a seat again. So I don't know how that works.
Are you, are they up for, is the seat up?
They, I do not know. They, Colleen was going to share that with us, so. And then we did celebrate Al Zerno, forty-one years on the CISA-seven board. He is stepping down in Mishikot. And another gentleman has ten years, so we, we celebrated their, their service, so.
Well, we have always been really happy to have a seat at that board. Mick filled it for so many years and having that inside information and that, so if you can keep us informed.
Yeah, I didn't get an email yet from Colleen on that, so.
All right, thank you. Student representative report. Mark.
All right, so spring break is next week and the third quarter is ending on Friday. National Honor Society is going to be inducting twelve new members. Sophomores are now applying to be in the Rising Phoenix Program. The Algoma Education Foundation is having a scholarship night for seniors to help them write their scholarships. There's going to be ASVAB testing for the military on April fifth. Grant Vander West will be playing in the All-State Football Game in July. We've had different military branches and colleges coming in at lunch to share their knowledge. And then the Abilities Project has a sale on April first.
Thank you. Any questions for Mark? All right, thank you. Misconceptions and rumors. I have a couple of things to talk about today. The first misconception that I have found is pretty widespread is all around our school board seats and who can vote for the people when they're running. So since we're coming up to an election, I'd like to sort of clear up that misperception. So the way it works is the seven-member school board has four city-designated seats and three unincorporated seats. The only time that that really matters is for the person who is sitting in the chair and who is running for that seat. Because in every single election, everyone in the district votes for all the seats. And that, you know, probably because that's a little different than specific wards and all that kind of thing. People get that mixed up. So this coming election, we have two city seats available, three people running. The reason we have an extra city seat is because Chrissy was appointed and so by the laws she has to rerun. And then we have two unincorporated people running for one unincorporated seat. But on everybody's ballot, you will be able to vote for the city choices and the unincorporated choices. Now, I think the other reason that it gets so confusing is we don't always have both on every ballot. Next year, I believe it'll be two city seats again. The fall, you know, so it'll just be city seats. But everybody will be voting for it. The following year, I think it's two unincorporated seats. And everybody, you know, will be voting, you know, so it switches. So I think that's probably what adds to the confusion. But anyway, the thing that I wanted to make sure everybody knew is that you should get informed about everyone running because you have a vote for unincorporated and the city seats. So that's the first one. And then because we have our referendum coming up, I have heard, I don't know if I want to call it a rumor, some discussion that there is, are some people that are just absolutely certain that we couldn't possibly be going forward with a referendum without increasing the taxes for our taxpayers. And so I just, where we can't, you know, know penny by penny, but as a board, we have been planning for this for several years. To the best of our ability, we have paid off old debt so that this new debt can sort of replace the old debt and have very minimal, if any, effect on the taxpayer. Now, the other piece that I think is also not well-understood and maybe Amber, you can elaborate a little when you give your finance report. But the idea for us as a board is we wanted to make, you know, meet the school needs, not go above a dollar amount that was going to change taxes. I mean, we were pretty adamant about that. So that's why everything that was on our want list didn't get in our final list. But we, the, the way school finance is, is done is not the way any other business is. So the mill rate, you know, we can say the mill rate, we intend to keep the mill rate the same because we are going to replace old debt with new debt. Okay, if we don't do that, if the referendum fails, will the mill rate drop? Probably. Will the taxes drop? Not necessarily. Because the way schools are financed, aid is thrown into the balance. And if the state sees that the school district doesn't have debt to pay off, then they will give us less aid, which then means that has to be thrown onto the backs of the taxpayers. So it's not a simple formula. It's very confusing to everyone. But the bottom line is, you know, the board put a lot of thought into planning for this referendum and our needs and in trying to make it so that the school district needs would be met and it would also be a win, you know, for the taxpayers. That's our intent. Obviously, people might have individual questions and luckily we have one more informational session this Thursday where we will have a question from Baird, who is the finance company. So they, you can get as in-depth as you want, anybody that has questions. And we will also have representatives from Bayland Builders and McKinstry, who are all involved in our facility studies. So as well as giving the information on the referendum, which Jesse's been going around and we already had one session, we will also have that next session here at the high school. Five to six o'clock is the tour and then six to seven is the presentation. And again, if the, what you need to do is be an informed voter, we aren't going to tell you how to vote, but we want you to understand everything when you are going to come into that board's door. So I'd encourage anybody that has any questions to come this Thursday. So, public participation. Anybody sign in?
No.
This leads into Board President announcements. We have on my left, Pat, who has served twenty-one years. And on my right, Ann, who has served twenty years. I mean, decades of service to this community. And we're going to miss them. This is their last meeting because after the election, the April meeting will be the reorganization meeting. Granted, Chrissy, we hope that you're still sitting in that spot. There is the election. But I, you know, we have a cake to sort of honor and thank these two. So between our regular meeting and our closed session, we'll have a short recess and everyone can have a piece of cake and thank these two wonderful people for their service. All right, administration reports.
Good evening, everyone. We'll start off with our key takeaways. We've got three things that we're going to be discussing, district finance update, just an update on the April second referendum. And then I'll talk a little bit about the administrator contract template. So we'll turn it over to Amber.
So everything is still looking really good. For the vast majority, we're underneath where we should be for this time of year. About sixty-seven percent is our target rate and you can see our numbers are lower than that, so we're doing good. There are a few bills that come in towards the end of the year where we pay the full allowance at the end of the year. One example of that would be the transfer from the general fund to the special education fund. That's about eight hundred thousand dollars. That will get done at the end of the year, so that's coming up. Then we have our tax revenues for the community service fund and the debt service funds have been received in full. The remainder of those tax dollars will be paid out by the county in August, but we will do a book entry to recognize those revenues in this fiscal year because they are for this year, so. And then that's just your referendum debt and non-referendum debt. And then the long-term capital improvement fund, I just keep that up there just to remind everyone that we do have that fund. We are putting money away in there. We have not spent any money out of it this year. We may or may not, depending on what happens with the referendum, so. And that's about it for the finance update unless anyone has any questions.
Just want to mention about, you already talked about this, but reminded that April second is our election day. Not only will we have the school board election, but also the capital improvement referendum. Ten million, fifty thousand dollars. Just an update, I'm going around doing a lot of public information presentations. I have to say they've been very well received by the public. One thing I hear the most is, wow, we didn't know all of this information. So I think that's a positive. We had our first tour informational session for the whole community last Tuesday. Would say we had about thirty community members join us for the tour of the elementary school. And I think about eight of them stayed for the presentation. Turnout was a little lower because of banderama that night. And most of the people that were on the tour had already been part of some type of presentation that I've given, so they've heard the information already, so. But it was great to kind of walk down memory lane with some of our former graduates, alumni. We even had a former teacher there who taught for many years at the elementary school, so it was great. And then we have our second informational night coming up this Thursday here at the middle school, high school. That'll be from five to six, doing a tour. And then the information presentation will be from six to seven in the library. Also, an update that we will have postcards being mailed out to all community members on March twenty-eighth, just as a reminder to go out and vote, so. We already spoke about this. I want to jump into the administrator contract. So included in your board packet is a contract template that was provided from our Wisconsin School Board Association for, their legal counsel reviewed our contract and added some language. You'll see additional language in terms of the contract itself, the responsibilities, the benefits portion, the evaluation, and then the releasing contract. So any additional information that you see is underlined in the contract. And there was one section, I believe it was in regards to the physical exam that was crossed off, so we took that piece out, so.
It's included in something else on the front page that was added.
Sorry, what?
What was taken off was incorporated in some of the new language on the first page, so there really wasn't anything.
Of course, right. And we'll be discussing the contracts during the closed session as well for tonight, so. That is all I have.
Any questions for Jesse? Okay, we'll keep moving. Elementary principals report.
I am happy to welcome two of our elementary school staff members today. We, one of the things that we've been talking a lot about at the elementary school, and you've probably heard Marie talk about it, because there's a really good overlap between special ed and gen ed. And there was this acronym that we use, MLSS. And MLSS stands for Multi-Level Systems of Support. It's basically a structure for how we support our students. Struggling students, all the way to gifted and talented students, anywhere in between. It's just a way to basically provide students with what they need. Whether that be academics, whether that be behaviorally, whether it be social, emotionally, basic needs, attendance. It's just a really great framework for meeting the needs of the student wherever those needs may fall. At the elementary school, we have been working to be really intentional about that and what that means for our students. And about two years ago now, we have implemented something called PAW time. And it's kind of like an intervention time, but it's basically a half-hour time slot that's dedicated to providing students with what they need. A lot of times academically, specifically during this half hour of time. And this is something that we have been, our reading specialists and along with our third-grade team of teachers, and Mr. Bredel is our third-grade rep tonight. But something that they've been working closely on, specifically in third grade. And I just wanted to highlight them and have them share a little bit with you about what they've been doing. I will turn it over to Whitney and Mr. Bredel to maybe talk about the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish by this PAW time. And then Mr. Bredel, if you want to add in with some things that you have been doing specifically and how you and the teachers have made it work for you guys, so.
Sure, so as Katie said, we kind of use that design of the multi-level systems of support. And so basically what that idea means is you kind of have your, like your tier one, which is just your universal core instruction that all students receive. Then you have tier two, which would be like those students that might be struggling a little bit or maybe just falling a little bit below like a grade level benchmark that need a little bit of some additional support to kind of like bounce back up to where we would want them to be. And then tier three would be students that maybe need more intensive type of support or that could include also some specialized instruction through special education services. So there's these type of academic services, but that could also include things like speech or occupational therapy or those types of things as well. So I think in the past, we've always kind of followed this structure, but our, kind of what we struggled with sometimes was figuring out when it was best during the day for these kids to be pulled for different types of services just because you obviously aren't, you're not going to pull them from their core instruction, they need that. So by designating this separate half an hour portion of time for every grade level, we can ensure that, kind of like Katie said, all students are getting what they're need, what they need. And if they need to be pulled out for some kind of specialized instruction or support, we know that they're not missing any core instruction. So it's just been really helpful in like scheduling and just kind of everybody knowing when students can be pulled for things. So as a reading, the reading specialist, I work with students that receive reading interventions through Title I. So PAW time would be the time of day that myself and then our other Title I teacher, Danielle Schultz, will pull students that need reading interventions. So that could be through like tier two or students that need maybe something even more intensive, like a tier three reading intervention. And so we have our separate blocks of time for each grade level. And so we have a certain number of students that we're able to provide services to kind of throughout the grade level at each of those PAW times. And we kind of collaborate with classroom teachers on that as well to determine which students would, would best qualify to receive interventions.
Yeah, it's great. We have three third-grade teachers. So we have math, reading, and then a gifted and talented program of that. And the gifted and talented, our third, third-grade teacher does extra projects. Last year, they published a book. Each person got to write a page, drew the picture, published a book, hardcover. Parents did buy a copy of it, turned out really cool. This year, I think she's getting another book in the works. I don't know about where it's at in the step process or whatever. I'm the math person, so I brought my flashcards along. We're going to do around the world right now. Look what you're thinking, Cap. No, I'm just teasing. Am I though? No. Nothing but a little competition to have kids really want to study their math facts. And the last quite a few years, the basic facts retention has been late. So I get a chance to play games with the kids. I get a chance to, I get to test around the world, do some things I don't have time for in my math classroom, that the kids latch on to the embrace. They have fun with it. And it's fun to watch them because when I do the flashcards, do the math game, whatever, you can see the gears clicking and, oh, six times eight, forty-eight. You know, they don't have to go through the steps or what have you. They'll have that fact in their head. So that part of it, oh, thank you, it's working. But in the big picture of things, it's a great chance to get those kids who I don't have a time or a structured time, my regular classroom time, to do it. And the third, third-grade teacher, Linda, does the reading part of it. So she'll do extended reading projects with them. She'll have time for doing some one-on-one. She'll have time for some small group things. We packed a lot of stuff in that half hour, which actually turned out to be about twenty-six minutes, twenty-seven minutes. But it's a great time to, to go above and beyond, if you will. So, do you have any questions?
You're seeing results.
Pardon me?
You're seeing results from this.
Yes, and not, not wild, flash in the pan, this is really cool. But the little things that instead the kids looking at a multiplication sheet, they'll say, three times eight is twenty-four. You know, they don't have to go back to that crutch, which I call those things a crutch. You don't want to have them forever. But in the big picture, if I can have those kids remember, you remember second grade with the fact sheets and whatever, I try to keep doing that, those things, and making sure those kids know that's a thorn in our sides forever, the basic facts. So, yes, I am seeing results.
I will add, what I appreciate about the way that third grade has set up their structure is they really, number one, collaborated together. So you heard Chuck talk about how one teacher has taken on reading support, one teacher has taken on math support, and then there's a teacher that's dedicated to more of the enrichment type of activities. So I appreciate the collaboration and then I also appreciate just the skills that they have identified that the students need extra practice with. So the nice thing about MLSS and the structure is that it allows for staff like Whitney to work with students who really, really need interventions, very formal interventions. And then you have students that just need help on the data, on the daily basis with basic facts or fluency practice on a regular basis. So it just kind of evens things out and it kind of fills some holes in the kind of support that we are providing to students. And they're kind of fluid groups. You guys have a really great structure for moving kids around based on what they need. Some get math and reading, some get just math, some get just reading.
I was just going to add that.
Yeah.
And the neat part, both of our small enough group, then we can move kids back and forth. And even Whitney will say, okay, today the Johnny or Suzie or Tommy, whoever it is, have at, have fun with it. So we're able to, to work within our three, four, or five people and say, Tommy goes here, Johnny goes here, whatever. It works out very nicely.
Is this the first year you've tried it, second? Okay, nice.
And learning is a goal, obviously. A few hiccups in the beginning. But yeah, it's a lot of fun. You know, it's a lot of fun. And the kids, short of where do I go here today, what day is it, Tuesday, Thursday, whatever I go, that part of it, once they get into routine like any other kid, they get off with it. So it works out really well.
I would just add to, putting my special education hat on and principal hat. We have kids being pulled so often throughout the day for different things. Speech and language, physical therapy, occupational therapy, gifted and talented services. And so by having this dedicated time in your day, in your schedule, that is protected where it's designated just for that purpose, you don't have kids being pulled from that universal instruction. Because if you keep pulling them from that. Because if you keep pulling them from that instruction that happens daily in literacy and math, the kid's only going to fall further and further behind because they're missing out on that, so.
And that's huge, Jessie, if I might add to that. We do still have it happening, obviously, but not in the latest, number one. And number two, that structured time we have, even spec ed teachers will take their kids and, you know, do some one-on-one or whatever math one day or the next. So it is, that's the half hour chunk. Don't disturb it, don't mess with it, that's what's going to stay golden. And again, it's a great time for that.
Is it an acronym or is it strictly PAH?
Strictly.
Strictly PAH.
I had a thing about that. I'm like.
I was just going to say.
Everything else is an acronym.
It's just PAH to go along with like.
Well, PAH, yeah, okay. Everything's an acronym, so that's what I was curious.
Pretty amazing, no, it doesn't.
Work. Work contact. We can make it one if we need to.
Like everything else, education is an acronym attached to it now.
So we have this time integrated into the schedule through fourth grade consistently. We're hoping to make some adjustments going into next year for fifth and sixth grade. We have kind of a.
They do right now, but it's a little bit.
It's a little bit, it's not five days a week, I should say. So they have a time in there, fifth and sixth grade have a time in there, but it's not as consistent, so we're looking at some schedules to make it a little bit more open, so.
Yeah, sounds like a great point. Thank you.
It's working.
Come in and share that with us.
You sure you don't want to do it around the world?
Maybe during cake.
Next time, yes. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. And congratulations on the years of work. Having been there in those seats in every district, God bless.
You've been there.
Been there, done it, yes.
Emma, yes. Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. The next thing on my agenda is I just wanted to share a little bit about our spring concerts and family events. So just this past Thursday, our third and fourth grade did hold their spring concert. If you attended that, you would have seen that our music teacher, Mrs. Shaper, was not there. She is at home with her little one, so congratulations to her. In her absence, the third and fourth grade teachers took on the entire direction of that. Mrs. Smith was our director, the teachers practiced with the students. It was a wonderful concert, a lot of energy. They did a really, really great job. So I just wanted to thank the third and fourth grade teachers for that. Looking ahead to our concerts, or what would have been our concerts for the rest of our grades, because Mrs. Shaper is not here, the grade levels are opting to do more of a family event. And I have the dates written down here. So 4K and kindergarten will hold their family night on the evening of April eighteen. And then second and, or first and second will hold theirs on May sixteen. So that's 4K kindergarten on April eighteen, first and second on May sixteen. And they're just modifying a little bit. There might be some song incorporated into that, but it's not as formal of a spring concert show as we have done in the past. So that's exciting to look forward to. And then just a quick state assessment update, because we were definitely in the thick of that. Our eleventh graders attempted to take an ACT on March twelfth, had a little snaffing with our system. We ended up not being able to test, and we did reschedule that for Friday this past week. It went great. I told Dave already, but a huge thank you to the high school staff and the students for being patient and flexible and adaptable. It was like no big deal. It was like just another day of working through a problem. So something that could have been, you know, a little bit more crazy definitely isn't that, so the staff is just wonderful. But we did successfully test last Friday. We have a couple makeups to do this week, but we will take care of those. And then looking ahead, we have the forward exam coming up, the free ACT, secure, and the DLM. Those are all happening in April. So when we get back from spring break, we'll hit the ground running with that, so. That is all I have.
All right, moving on to Dave, middle school, high school, principal, three quarters.
Okay. I am excited tonight to share just a little bit about some of the work that Marie Bowman's doing in her classrooms. So Marie is one of our newer staff members, but not a new educator. And she's brought a wealth of expertise and connections to our district. And I just want to highlight her work, give you an idea of what's going on in the business and sort of the business tech world in the high school. So one of the things that Marie specializes in is in bringing guest speakers into her classroom and then also bringing students out to sites and learning onsite. So some examples, Jill, coming up, Jill Hedrington of Weber Insurance will be coming in to talk to students about renters insurance and car insurance on April ninth. I'm going to probably slaughter this name, but Markie Forsher and Sarah Crowsey from WPPI Energy and Algoa Utilities are coming in to work with the students on personal finance and career planning. And they just teach them how to read and use a utility bill, right? Right now, Marie started an event marketing class, and those students are working on a reality fair which will be held here for both Kiwanee and Algoa students. And that's going to be interactive experience where students will learn about making real-world financial decisions and how to manage their money. So they'll think, learn things like how do they have an account at a financial institution? How do they obtain money? How do they get a loan? How do they manage debt? And things like that. And what's exciting is that those event marketing students are having a real activity to develop marketing around and are advertising that. So it's an interesting and fun way to engage students in many different facets of business. On March sixth, our sophomore junior students went to a high school job fair at Stone Harbor. I talked about that a little bit at the last board meeting, so I won't have to talk too much about that. March eighth, someone from the Wisconsin Bureau of Consumer Protection came into school and talked to the students about identity theft and how to prevent that, talked about internet safety, things like that. Again, tailored really specifically to both middle school age students and then also high school age students. And I would also like to make another shout out to our students because a gentleman that came from that bureau commented that our students were the best behaved group of students he had presented to all year. I hope he doesn't tell all of the people. Those were his words. So actually, and I did, I did walk in and out of that, and the kids really were attentive. And I think, again, that's another credit to Marie because she prepared the kids to be ready for that presentation. This was a really interesting event to me. But FBLA students, that's Future Business Leaders of America, went to a Wisconsin Broadcaster Student Forum at Lambeau Field in February. And there they attended education sessions, a job fair, they got to get their picture taken with Wayne Larrabee and Larry McCarron. They also are now official members of the Wisconsin Broadcasters Association. So they're going to add those to their accounts, their LinkedIn accounts and their resumes. We have one eleventh grader this year that's going to earn a Wisconsin Technical College System approved pathway certificate in business software essentials. And there are five other students that have just completed or will complete year one of that two-year certificate. So that is also very exciting. Jordan Josie, 2017 Algoa graduate, zoomed in to the students in event marketing and personal finance and career planning and intro to business. And she shared her journey through high school and college and talked about how she obtained her current position as marketing coordinator with Carplus. She stressed the importance of taking advantage of all the opportunities of career exploration and gaining experience while they're in school. Some other things that she is working with students on, credit scores, credit cards, banking tools, and she's assisted by the Bank of Luxembourg with that. She's got a two-day budgeting session for students' personal finance and career planning with an individual from Money Management Counselors, which is a strategic credit counseling service. WFRV TV vocal five sports anchor reporter Lauren Helenbrecht and multimedia journalist Timothy LaTao came into the business classroom and talked to the students about their broadcast careers. Seth Robertson, someone I know a little bit, came in. He's a certified public accountant, he's a business owner. He came in and showed students how to fill out tax forms. They also talked about how to read in W two, and they practiced filling out tax forms. They're currently working on completing a job shadow, her students are, or at least doing an interview of an individual and a career of interest to them. They'll be creating LinkedIn and handshake accounts. They just competed learning about SMART goals and had to have an assignment to create three of their own for a personal finance plan that they're working on. They have to do a one-month personal budget tracking assignment. They're also learning about the stock market and how investments work. And given, they were given a hundred thousand dollars, I think of fake money, to invest into a portfolio and learn about how the stock market, what the history of it, how it came to be and how it operates. And even eighth graders are on this, and they're learning how to create a business plan, section by section, with a business or product or service of their choice. So she's covering so much in her classrooms and doing such a marvelous way of engaging our students that I just wanted to highlight that. And in part because, I don't know how many times on social media I say, don't you think students should have to learn about how, I'm like, oh, I was in this. Just come to school for a few days, learn what we do here, please. So, so yeah, that's that. Next, don't know if you heard, but there was a bandera ma here. And I just want to point that out again because one of the things that we try to do as a school district, and that what we try to do as a middle school and high school is connect with our community. And if there is an event that shows that connection better than bandera ma, I'd like to know because literally it's packed wall-to-wall. You see generations of musicians performing for each other, listening to each other. And then, of course, they all rode the Crazy Train together this year, and that was exciting. Everybody played Crazy Train from Ozzy, Osborne, for those who don't know Ozzy's last name, which was also really an exciting way to sort of end the concert. But just to watch the cross-generational interactions, to see the community come out, just kudos to Jen Massey and the music staff for putting that together every year. It's a great event.
Yeah, there is really nothing like it, and it's hard to describe if you haven't been there. I was thrilled that it made, you know, Jessie talked about it in the article about the school in the Star News, and that the picture was up on the bleachers so that you could actually see the full floor of the gym with musicians. Because, not that that really gives you the experience, but it's sort of like a wow, you know? Even if you weren't there, you got an idea of what a big deal it is. Because yes, I think it's just a wonderful community and school event. All right. Anything for Dave? All right, moving on. Katie, Cast Finder, Algoa Venture Academy, and Actpumps.
Yes, so this week in ABA, students are doing their project defenses. So each quarter, students have an opportunity to showcase their project. So first and third quarters, they have to do learning defense, and then usually second and fourth quarters, they do the open community project showcase night. So project defenses are kind of like thesis, where you defend your thesis in front of panel of judges. Students have to defend their projects that they've been working on all quarter. They have to come up with a product, and they have seven to ten minutes to discuss their projects and go over each learning target that they hit with that project. They will talk about the target, and then they self-assess in front of a panel of us as well as their peers, whether they got, you know, whether they thought they were advanced or proficient or developing in each target. Then the peers assess their defense, I guess, as well. And then afterwards, we meet with them directly after their project defense and go over, you know, whether we agree with where they self-assessed or where they could improve, and if they want to bump their learning targets from proficient to advanced, what they need to do. That is what's taken up our entire week, because each kid has a half hour slot, so, which is really cool because a lot of the students don't even know what each other's personal projects are in ABA. So we chose three projects for each student to assess, and then they got to choose two that they would like. So like one of our students is in the Raisin Phoenix Program, so we kind of hooked up the students that potentially want to go into that to come on to their learning defense, so they could see if that's a bug. So that's always exciting. ABA Health Summit, so in order to get their health credits, we are putting on four weeks of health summits for the kids. So myself and Ms. Malone are going through fetal and child development. Ms. Kay is working home athletics. They brought in Anna Blonic, so Zach Blonic's wife, to talk about nutrition for athletes. The adolescent mind, Abby, I was going over kind of psychology, we do different things in adolescence. And Ms. Kay, or Ms. Lemmy is doing growing microgreens. So we have students who start the microgreens, and then two weeks later are hooking with them and making smoothies or something for the bus. And then lastly, in Cast Finder, talking about adulting and finances, students are working with Ms. Malone to learn how to write checks and balance checkbooks, or if they have a debit card, how to put it in the checkbook and how to keep track of everything. They're also doing floor pillows with Ms. Malone in their adulting class, and then they are continuing their curriculum in the library, doing vision boards with Braylon. So that's been a really cool experience for the kids because it's a more modern way of doing goal setting, I guess, that makes sense to the kids and they get to have really high goals or really small goals, and they're making a vision board, I think, for the rest of 2024.
Questions for Katie? All right, moving on. Marie, Special Ed, well, Ms. Greenport.
I just have one thing on my agenda items for tonight, and I was highlighting Howell Brew. It's a project that is, well, it's an ABA students' project. Berkeley Manlanden, who is interested in special education, has partnered with one of our special education teachers up at the high school here, Ms. Young. And with some of our students in special education, they have developed a coffee cart. So weekly, they will send out maybe two days, two days a week roughly, a little order form for the middle of high school staff. You put your name, whether you want a coffee, a specialty drink of the week, or hot chocolate. And lately, they've been even including treats. And you can either pay them cash, or they have little punch cards, so you can pay ahead of time and just have it taken off your punch card, and then where they should deliver it. So not only have they been, you know, making it and collecting the orders, they've been delivering it to you with a smile, so it's really cool. But they've been doing a lot of backwork with this coffee cart, too. A while back, they visited Luxembourg Casco. They have a coffee cart called Venus Spark. So that's kind of what helped them get started. And then recently, they visited Green Bay. They went to Sybil Hop and saw their coffee carts. And also went to Luna Cafe and met the owner, who taught them about the blend process and even donated coffee beans for the project, which is really awesome. Then a couple weeks ago, the Venus Spark from Luxembourg Casco actually came to visit here to see and support the coffee cart. And they donated some aprons and espresso for our students and just kind of saw how the delivery process was going. And it was just really cool to see the partnership between the two different coffee carts. So it's been really exciting to see how it's been growing and expanding and just even the growth with the students. You can tell that they are really learning different processes and, you know, taking ownership of it, so it's really awesome.
What grade levels?
Mostly middle school through high school. It's, yeah, it would be, I would say there's probably a student from seventh grade up until twelve, I guess.
Good revenues, lots of business?
I would say, I mean, teachers and coffees, just say no more. I am a pretty good customer. I will drive from the elementary school to here to get a coffee.
Do they have a Starbucks recipe yet? Because then, I mean.
They've been making some pretty good espresso drinks, like last week was smore or something, or like.
French toast.
French toast, sorry.
Malone coffee beans are stellar. Like I would take those over the Starbucks coffee, I think, because they're so good.
All right. We had a few committees meet, buildings and grounds committee meeting, map on March sixth, and we went through a few things. We do have a recommendation that will be in our action. But we looked at some different proposals for the bus that we've been wanting to buy and have the SRF funds for, and came up with a re- came up with a recommendation for that. Also looked at some potential flooring options for the auxiliary gym, because there's been concern about the floor surface being a little slippery there, and, and so we're, you know, thinking about things like that. And, and then some mats, which, which, logo mats, actually, which sort of, I saw them at the convention in terms of it just be a way of replacing some of our small mats that are at our entrances with something bigger that also had, something that demonstrated our pride as a school, you know, home of the wolves or a wolf pad or whatever, in different strategic places. And so we were looking at all those things. The only thing that we're moving forward with at this point is the recommendation on the bus purchase.
The bus is a brand-new bus or a new-used?
It is a brand-new one.
And now is replacing one?
It is the one that we've been wanting, that we've been needing to add, yes.
Add a route, add a driver, and...
Is that an added road, a spare, or what?
It would be used for spring sports. So right now, with track, softball, baseball, we are short of bus right now for getting our students to events and stuff. So no, we would not be adding a route, though. And then we have bus number seven, which is our oldest bus. Probably only got a couple years left of its life, so it would just then replace.
Well, didn't you have to borrow a bus?
We did last spring. We, Luxembourg Casco was generous enough to allow us to use one of their buses at no cost. All we had to do was do the fuel, because we were short for spring sports. The funds for this, and we can talk more when it comes to the action item, but it's using ESR funds, which can be spent before September. So it's not coming from the district general fund, it's coming from the ESR three funds that we have.
But remember, those ESR funds, we don't actually have the funds. You know, you spend them, and then you send them, send it in DPI to be, to be approved, and then maybe six months later, you'll be reimbursed. Well, that's how it works.
And this is an eligible cost from the...
Yep, that's why we purchased the bus from last year.
That's why it's been designated, yeah. Yeah. And it's a use it or lose it, in terms of funds that were allocated.
In a lot of districts, there were so many restrictions put on these ESR funds that a lot of districts said, "We're not gonna jump through the hoops, we're not gonna..." Because it's just too much paperwork, so that we were able to spend this and get reimbursed for it because they were eligible expenses is good.
Correct. And then Finance Committee Meeting on March 11th.
Okay, we talked about the bus. Actually, the, the new bus is cheaper than one of the used buses that we always use, that, that one, we talked to them at the school board convention two years ago. So that's a good thing. Talked about the mats, too. Talked about insurance, the insurance quotes are coming up. And what really is increasing is the life insurance. Rates are increasing quite a significant amount, and mostly because of the retired retirees still on the plan. So we're gonna be looking at, they're gonna give us some options as to how we can, how we can do that, so we can, actually, so the increase isn't so much, and we can make it comfortable for the retirees to make their portion of their, of their, of their life insurance premium. Talked a little bit about the CPI for the coming year, it's 4.12%, you know, raises are kind of based on that. Last year, it came in at 8%. Well, you know, we couldn't give 8%, I don't know how many districts around here could. I think we gave about 3%. So they should be recommending, it's 4.12, we're recommending 4.4%, so across the board.
Any questions? Again, there are some action items that we'll be addressing, so. All right, moving on to other items for discussion, summer school 2024.
It's hard to believe that we're looking at summer school already, but it is that time, so we're doing some recruiting of staff members and creating classes already. So I'm gonna let Katie give an update on where we're at with summer school, and then that is an action item to hold on there, too.
We have begun planning for summer school, so Lindsay Herman is coordinating that for us this year. We are looking to hold that June 10th through the 28th. Similar time schedule as we have in the past, so eight to noon, with a couple different sessions for the kids to choose from during those timeframes. We, Lindsay has already sent out and gotten interest from teachers, so teachers are working to put together their class descriptions, and we hope to get that out to families soon, where we can start filling those sessions for this upcoming summer. So interest from teachers is, I would say, similar to last year, so I think we'll be able to once again offer some really interesting courses, interesting and fun courses.
Is that typical, that there's a week off between summer school and...
Yeah.
Okay. Cause then the musical is not the last day of summer school this time, it's the second week of summer school, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, well, cause the musical says it's June 21 and 22. So you're saying summer school goes through the 28th?
Yes.
You can tell the board members that have children involved.
And childcare needs.
Okay, any other questions for Katie about summer school? All right, we'll move on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of February 26, 2024, the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting minutes of March 6, 2024, and the Finance Committee meeting minutes of March 11, 2024. I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Ann, second by Chrissy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that have been presented to us.
I'll move, second.
Chris Sly, seconded by Chris Benish, all in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the Board of Campuses for April 2nd, 2024 election. Motion made by Pat, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Lonnie?
Sure.
Okay. So the Board of Campuses will be...
So Chris is the clerk, would be there.
Yep.
And then we usually have two community members as well. And this year, Alison Demice is a parent, employee, but she also lives in the community, she will be one. And then I believe Mick will be the second one as a community member.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve summer school 2024.
Second.
Motion made by Pat, seconded by Chris Benish, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Algoma Elementary School Student Handbook.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ann, seconded by Pat. Questions or discussion on that?
Where do you want proof reads to go?
You can give them to me or to Katie.
I'm a fan of proof reading.
There's some edits that need to happen.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Algoma Middle High School Student Handbook.
A second.
Motion made by Lonnie, seconded by Chris Sly. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Algoma Venture Academy Handbook.
I'll move.
Second.
Pat, seconded by Chrissy. Questions or discussion on that? I had one question for Katie Horn regarding how, if there is a process for students that are in the academy to be able to be recognized for the requirement for National Honor Society, since National Honor Society has a grade point average as one of their requirements to be considered.
And mine's kind of on that boat, too. Students with Fs cannot be like prom court and stuff, but you don't have Fs, as far as I could tell, right?
We don't have Fs. So we have, yeah, three different levels of things. We have developing, proficient, and advanced. So our platform of these called Head Rushes, where we store all of our grades, all of our projects, all of our assignments, once we upload where the kids are at with each learning target in there, they develop the grade point scale. So they get different grade points for developing targets, different grade points for advanced targets, and different grade points for proficient targets. Students who are developing or not caught up in network are students who are technically failing. So we do have students who are not able to participate in sports or prom court or anything else if they at any grade point check that what he does, if they're developing their targets or if they're behind in network. So we also have some students who just got their acceptance letters to National Honor Society this week. So yeah, if you're Head Rush, any of the targets can be graded at any point, we can pull their GPAs that way.
Any other questions? All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the Algoma Elementary School Childcare Handbook.
I'll move.
Motion made by Ann, do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Sly. Oh, Lonnie. Seconded by Lonnie. Questions or discussion on that?
We talked last week about Fund 80, so will we be changing the admission? What, stuff on here, AES Childcare will accept any student enrolled in early childhood, little stars through sixth grade at AES, so...
Correct. So because it's run through our community foundation, which is the Fund 80, any child within the community, it does not need to be a student in the school district, can attend.
Can you do this one with Karen? Not you already want it to go to Katie?
I'll do it to Katie.
You get them all?
Any other comments or... Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve a 4% increase to salaries for cost of voting for administrators, teachers, and support staff for 24, 25 school year.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Ann, seconded by Pat. We'll do a roll call vote on this. Chris Benish?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I need a motion to approve the revised administrator contract template for 24, 25 school year.
I'll move.
Second.
Chris Sly and Chrissy, all in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the purchase of a new school bus in the amount of $150,000 from the Senate.
Second.
Motion made by Pat, seconded by Chris Benish, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I need a motion to approve the revision to the Algoma Venture Academy contract with the Algoma School District to include a new reimbursement rate per pupil aid, to include 85% going toward Algoma Venture Academy and 15% going toward district costs.
I'll move.
Motion made by Chris Benish, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by...
And someone tell me what it is now? Did I, did I see that in the, in the handbook? Do you know what it is now?
Right now, it's $8,500. There's not a percentage rate. We, the governing board for the Algoma Venture Academy has met, as well as the charter school committee, because the per pupil amount is increasing, so we went from $10,000 up to $11,000 this last year, and now there's $325 added each additional year after that.
For four years.
Correct, $420 some years. So going to a percentage will resolve that. We don't have to go back and forth every year.
So we're not, now you're not gonna know what it is until the funding comes over, okay?
Yeah, instead of having a set dollar amount, which doesn't make sense. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any requests for future agenda items? All right, I'll ask for a motion going into executive session under the Spencer Statute 19.85, Sub-Second, One and C, for the purpose of personal matters, hires, staff and positions, and board evaluation.
I'll move.
Second.
Seconded by Chrissy, roll call vote, Chrissy?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And I'll just say yes. So we will have a short recess.